Yes. I'm here.
Ah, good, okay. Oh gosh, we even have the police here. Watch out everyone.
It's my fault.
Okay, well, then let me call the meeting to order for the Monday, November 22nd, meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Millis. With us tonight is Aaron Underhill, our Vice Chair, and Craig Schultz, the Clerk, and we have Karen Beray, I can never, Beray DiMarzo, who was our Operations Support Manager, I believe is the term, and we have Mike Gazinski, the Town Administrator. So, welcome everyone and thank you all for joining us this evening. We have a number of things that we're going to be covering this evening. So, let's get to it. I'm going to start with the announcements, and for that, I'm actually going to turn to Mr. Gazinski, if that's alright, and let him go through some of the announcements for this evening.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. The first announcement is from the Millis Health Department. We'll be holding a town-wide flu clinic at the Veterans Memorial Building, 900 Main Street. On, well, actually, I guess we already missed that one.
I think you're also holding it on the 27th.
Yes, sorry, the main one.
I'll add the 27th, so would it be the same time, Karen?
I believe so, but we will certainly post it on the website.
So, Saturday, November 27th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the quadrivalent flu shot only. And don't ask me what that means. It's not for seniors, or it's not specialized for seniors, and you can, you can schedule a time for the shot. I would, I would recommend that you go to the town's website to find the link. Or you could call Jen Kagan at the Board of Health at 508-376-7042. So, no insurance needed, and it's for eight years and older. So, that is the first announcement, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The next one is just a, to inform the Board of some very good news. We received a, a letter from Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito dated November 15th congratulating the town, which the Town of Millis has been awarded a Recycling Dividends Program grant of $4,200 through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. And they'd like to thank the town for our commitment to reducing waste and increasing recycling. Like to thank Mr. McKay for his work on that. And so those, those funds will be well-used to assist our recycling program. I think that's all. That is all the full announcements I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I think that's all I had on the list myself. So, that's great. And I think what we'll do is move directly, I apologize, into the next order of business, and we have some appointments to make. The first appointment is for two part-time public safety dispatchers, and for that, I'm going to turn to both Chiefs of Fire and Town Administrator Gazinski. So.
I will defer the chief to the chief to begin, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. So, as everybody well knows, Officer Kern's recently retired from the Millis Police Department, so that kind of got us started in terms of looking for replacement part-time dispatchers and one full-time dispatcher. That being said, the, the pool is kind of small. Fortunately, this was the first year that we've ever went online with the application process, and we were able to get some legitimate qualified candidates with experience. So, Mr. Chair, you want me to begin with the two part-timers, sir?
Please.
Okay, the, so the first applicant for part-time is Ms. Sandra O'Malley. She comes with 10-plus years' experience from Eastern Police Department. She holds all CGIS, 911, IMC CPR certifications. And she's maintained that. The reason why she's leaving Eastern was they went regional, and she truly enjoys working for one, one community. She's, she's been in here observing for a couple of weeks, on and off, to see the, how the operations worked. And Ms. O'Malley will virtually be plug-and-play, so there'll be no downtime or laps where we're going to have to cover extensive shifts with overtime. She'll probably need two days of getting familiar with the way things operate here. So, we're extremely fortunate because had she needed training, you're looking at almost three weeks of training to get this candidate up and running. So, with that, do you want me to do one at a time or do, do both part-timers?
I think we ought to take each one at a time, if that's alright with the, with you, Chief.
Sure.
And I'd like to open it to any questions or comments from the Board members at this point. Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would request that the Board vote to ratify my appointment of Sandra O'Malley as a part-time public safety dispatcher for the Town of Millis.
I move, oh, glad, no, you go, you got it, go ahead.
That's because I'm unmuted, it took you that for a second. I'll move that we ratify the, Ms. Gazinski's appointment of Sandra O'Malley as a part-time dispatch.
The movement seconded to ratify the appointment of Sandra, Sandra O'Malley as a part-time dispatcher. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. It's unanimous, and thank you very much. And to Ms. O'Malley, is she with us tonight, Chief?
She is not, and Garen is not. They're both working, like, finishing up their jobs now, so.
Well, hopefully, at some point in the future, you can have them join us at a meeting, so we can at least officially say thank you to them and welcome them aboard.
Absolutely.
Okay, and now on to your next point.
Of, the next part-time dispatcher, this has been a little bit of a process. We've been waiting for November for two years now. Teagan LeBlanc is the next candidate for the part-time dispatch position. As everyone knows, in town, we run a Leadership Academy program here, and Teagan attended it in eighth grade, and since eighth grade, she's come back every year to work with the campers as a counselor. She, she's a great role model for all the kids that, that come through the program, and she obviously took a liking to law enforcement, and I can, I can say without a doubt, across the board and in the Police Department, all the officers and dispatchers, as well as administrative staff, have a high deal of respect for Ms. LeBlanc. She recently, for the past year, has been an intern for the Police Department, and never in my lifetime have we ever had an intern here. But in her time here, she's accomplished numerous goals, but probably the most significant would be reorganizing the Records Department, as well as the License to Carry Division, which makes life a whole lot easier for the officers that handle the licensing, as well as the court cases. She's been a phenomenal employee, so we want to try to keep her here and keep her interested, and we would love to have Teagan appointed as a, a part-time dispatcher to help start a career in law enforcement, hopefully with the Millis Police Department.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gazinski.
Based on the enthusiastic recommendation of the Police Chief, I would request that the Board ratify my appointment of Teagan LeBlanc as a part-time public safety dispatcher for the Town of Millis.
Thank you. Before I poll the Board, I do want to make a couple of quick comments first. Having been exposed to our chief and some of the other officers for all this time, I think it's great that you still want to work with us. Truthfully, we have one of, I think, one of the best departments in the whole state, to be very frank, so. And I've heard nothing but good things. You basically walk on water, as far as they're concerned. So, I think it's terrific, and your dedication to working with the department for all these years is not unnoticed by anyone, so. I see you there on the screen, and thank you very much for your willingness to come and join us. Before I take seconds and so on, on a motion, are there any comments from other members of the Board?
I can also echo what you've said. I've, I've met Teagan before, and I've heard nothing but great things, and her whole family is really fabulous and super-involved in town, and for her to have put in this, this time and effort already with the Police Department definitely shows, you know, the initiative and the drive. So, she sounds like a great candidate.
I have not met Teagan, but I'll stop by the station.
Alright, then, I move that we ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Teagan LeBlanc for a part-time dispatcher role with the Millis Police Department.
Second.
So, moving seconded to ratify the, now, the appointment of Teagan LeBlanc for a part-time dispatcher at the Millis Police Department. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much, and welcome aboard. That's terrific. Do you have anything you would like to say at this point? Ms. LeBlanc, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'm sorry, I tried to unmute myself, it didn't work. Just thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate the chance to be here.
Welcome aboard, and thank you very much.
And Teagan, it looks like you have a lot of fans out there. Thank you. So, welcome aboard, for sure.
Okay, that's great. Okay, let's move on, and Chief, I think you have one more here?
Uh, yes, sir. Just before we get ahead, just to clarify one thing with Teagan. She is, she obviously has to attend all the training, which we have scheduled out at the end of December. And just to clarify, all the training will be paid through the State 911 Grant, so that there's no financial impact to the operation budget. So, it's no cost to the community for, for Teagan's training. Our full-time candidate is Mr. Garen Isley. We were fortunate to have Mr. Isley apply with the Millis Police Department. His last job is, he was a regional supervisor, he was a supervisor for the Regional Dispatch Facility in Foxborough. He's been dispatching for, again, 10-plus years. In addition, he works on the command post for the Regional Metropolitan Regional Response Team. He has a, a great deal of experience, as well as all the certifications needed. He will be, begin getting familiar with the department and the operations this week, and assuming he gets appointed, he will begin his first tour of duty on Monday.
Mr. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am requesting at this time that the Board vote to ratify my appointment of Garen Isley to the position of full-time Public Safety Dispatcher for the Town of Millis.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we ratify the appointment of Garen Isley as a full-time public safety dispatcher.
Before I poll the Board, are there any comments or questions that any of the Board members have? Or anyone else for that matter? Having said that, I'll poll the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, and it's unanimous. Well, welcome aboard, Mr. Isley. So, it sounds like you have three very great picks there, Chief, and it, they look like they'll complement your department very, very well. So, welcome to all of you. And Chief, thank you very much for the great job your department has been doing to serve this town.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Let me see here, the next thing we have is, but we aren't going to go on the Council on Aging, I believe that was to be skipped tonight. So, I'm going to call on Mr. Gazinski with respect to the on-call snow removal worker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Board is, is aware, we, we are heading into the snow removal season, and we've been working to try to get on-call snow removal contractors to help us with shoveling and removing snow from the town buildings. So, we're actively seeking individuals, and we are fortunate to have one tonight that we're going to be asking the Board to ratify, and that is Brian Nichols. Brian worked as a seasonal laborer with the DPW over the summer. He's an excellent employee, and I am requesting that the Board appoint him this evening as an on-call snow removal contractor for the Town of Millis.
Very good. Do I have any questions or comments from any of the Board members? It's my understanding that Brian has done work with the town previously. So, I'm assuming that he's met all the Corey and other qualifications.
He has, this, this would be the last step for his appointment this evening, should the Board decide to ratify the appointment.
That's very good. I also know that it's increasingly difficult to find people who are willing to work with the towns to perform the snow removal job. So, if anybody knows of other people, I'm just putting in a pitch, we could use some more on standby.
We are still searching.
Good. Any further comments or questions from Board members?
I move that we ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Brian Nichols for an on-call snow removal worker.
Second.
Before I go through, is there any, are there any comments from the rest of the audience? Otherwise, I'll poll the Board for the on-call snow removal contractor. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm now, I think we have to open a hearing.
We are too.
Oh, wait a second, what time is it? Yeah, so let's, let me just see where we're at. That's set for 8:00 PM? So, in that case, let's move to the next items on the agenda, if that's okay with everyone. I'm going to start with the review approval of the salt bid with Mr. McKay, and as I asked Mr. McKay to please let us know about that, I also want to reinforce the Town Administrator said about the $4,000 from the state, and thank you very much for the diligent work that you and your department are doing.
You're welcome, thank you. So, let's get into what's not really all that good news. First, I would ask that the allow the Town Administrator to sign a, a contract in, to the annual, it's the MAPC, but actually, it's not the MAPC, I apologize. This is a consortium bid that Medfield puts out, and Millis is part of that, but you still, as the Select Board, have to ratify the expenditure of our part of it. So, I would ask that you approve an amount not to exceed $170,727 to Eastern Minerals. They're, they, they won the award this year, and then I'll get into prices. I, well, I'll, I'll get into the price. It's $65 per ton. That's a, a, a large increase over last year's, last, in the same company. Last year, we were paying $43.18, so we're going to be paying $21.82 more a ton this year, so. The only good news is, we, we do have a little bit of good news, is we, the salt shed, usually, we are waiting for this bid to go through and sign, so we can fill the salt shed. From the previous year, we do have a full shed this year.
Thank you. I assume that you've checked around, and these are about the best prices you're going to be, we're going to be able to get, so. It's not like we really have much option in doing this, to be very frank, so. At least we can get the salt.
Yep. We'll just have to take out. They have two different offices, Mr. Chair. They have one in, most of it comes out of Chelsea, and then they have one in Quincy, and Morton was the second bid. But, and they were like $83 a, a ton, so.
So, we can take out second mortgages to handle this one, I guess. So, okay. There isn't much option, but again, I'll ask the Board if you have any questions.
Questions. Craig, you're muted.
Craig's.
Hardly ever do that, this time. With the salt shed being full, if we don't, this is a not-to-exceed price, so if we don't have to buy salt, we aren't committed to it, and if we have to buy $80,000 with the salt, this is our real price, that's what we'll spend, correct?
Right, that's correct. We're not, we're not, you know, we don't have to buy 200, 2,000 tons or anything like that, no.
Alright, thank you.
Are there any other questions from anyone?
I move, I move that we approve a not-to-exceed amount of $170,727 to Eastern Minerals, and am I authorizing the Town Administrator to sign a contract for that?
Yes.
And, and that too.
Second.
So, moving seconded to authorize the Town Administrator to sign a contract with Eastern Minerals for salt, road salt, in the amount of $170,727, and we've been given other details below, which were reviewed by everyone. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. It's unanimous, and, you know, it is what it is, let's plus, we have to recognize that, so. I hate to say, let's hope it's not a bad winter, because every time we say that, it's like the doom follows. Okay.
Thank you.
See what's next here. There's a approval for the change of manager at the Ryan Family, and let me dig that up for a second here. Basically, that's the, I'll call it the amusement facility. I don't know what else really to call it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can probably just speak to that for a minute. So, whenever you have a liquor license and you have a change of manager, the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission has you officially changed the manager in a form, and the Board, which is you, as the local licensing authorities, have to officially approve the change of manager. So, that is, that is what this is about. So, they simply changed the manager, but we can't just change it on our own. You have to officially change it and vote on it tonight. But then, this is for Ryan Family Amusements, the bowling alley in town, right? Bowling Alley Amusements. So, this would happen with anybody with a liquor license? Anybody with a liquor license who officially changes a manager, or the owner, or anything of that sort, they have to officially do. Sometimes there's a fee associated with it for the state, sometimes not. We don't charge a fee when they're doing this piece, but they are renewing their license, so it's a good time to be doing this. Thanks. Certainly.
Okay. Me having to try to.
You're in wide license, yeah, if that's any help. It's not an alcohol.
I would, I'm just looking over the the package, and just seeing the Corey form with the driver's license number is not something we should be publishing anywhere.
Yeah, that should not be in there, sorry.
No, and, I mean, there's.
Oh, and a social security number?
Yeah, so we need to get that off the website, like.
Oh, dear.
Now.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, I didn't, that was in there, I'll text more in a minute now.
And I didn't look this over in that level of detail, just now, otherwise I would have.
Yeah, I just noticed it now, too. I looked at it, but I didn't.
I glossed right on it, too. Okay, that will be taken care of.
Sorry, but otherwise, I have no questions on it.
Okay, then I'll poll the Board.
So, I'll make a motion that we, hold on. That we approve the change of manager request for Ryan Amusements from Jeremy Seehome to Elizabeth Jones.
Second.
It's been moved seconded to a cha, to change the manager at Ryan Amusements from Jeremy Seehome to Elizabeth R. Jones. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Unanimous. So, even though it's somewhat perfunctory, the change is now in effect, so thank you very much. Okay, the next item appears to be the request for a Hanukkah menorah display, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Gazinski to go into that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a request from Rabbi Mendy. He had requested last year the establishment, or the placement of a menorah in front of the Veterans Memorial Building last year, and he placed it there just for one evening, and the Board approved that, and they did a ceremony. This year, he's formally requesting that the menorah be set up in front of the, the Veterans Memorial Building for the entire length of Hanukkah. This is similar to menorahs that he's setting up in Milford, Hopkinton, Holliston, Medway, Franklin, Westboro, Framingham, Natick, Upton, Foxborough, and Rentham. So, he's asking for a similar ability to put a menorah up in front of the, again, the Veterans Memorial Building. I have reviewed the request, and I've contacted the Fire Chief, who oversees the seasonal displays and decorations, the establishment of those on the different properties, and it, it certainly appears to be all workable from this end. Based upon that, I am recommending that the Board approve this request. Should the Board approve it, it would be set up within the next couple of days, and it would be taken down shortly after Hanukkah, probably around December 8th.
Very good, and I think it's important to point out, that doesn't mean the town is representing any particular religion. This is the opportunity for others also of other religions to put something up, if they explain what it is that they're trying to do. Given that, I'll open it to any questions from the Board members. I will say this, I believe is something that we do, is done pretty typically by towns throughout the area, as individuals, or groups request this capability for this period of time, so. Hearing no other comments, I'll take a motion on committing this to occur.
I move that we approve the request for the Hanukkah menorah display on the Veteran Memorial Building lawn.
Second.
So, moving seconded to allow for the approval for the menorah Hanukkah display at Veterans Memorial for the period of Hanukkah. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Done, thank you. Okay. This next item is discussing the process for the Town Administrator's annual evaluation. I believe each member of the Board has been. I believe each member of the board has been sent information about the evaluation forms that we use. Going through that, that doesn't mean that they are locked in concrete, if you come up with other ideas, please be prepared to bring them forward. But this gives you an outline and some specifics of how we have begun to provide feedback. To our town administrator on an annual basis, for what we think his job performance has been, and give him an opportunity to see. Areas where we'd like to see more effort, less effort, or a different perspective. But it overall allows both parties to get a better understanding of what, where we've been and where we're headed for the next year. Very similar to standard performance appraisals in industry, but, um, this one we are doing with the town. Our object is to try to have this completed, if I'm not mistaken, by the middle of January, is that correct? And.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I think we'll be looking, you know, at least by the end of January.
Okay, great, now, there are some ground rules, I'm sure you all understand. If you have questions regarding how to fill it out and so on. Uh, certainly you can contact Karen, the town administrator, or me, I don't think that's an inappropriate thing. Because we're not discussing, um, anything regarding a decision. What we're discussing is the co- the process of how to deal with it. Um, if you have changes or anything you want to add to it, or have any other items also. Forward them, it's probably best to forward those to the town administrator and Karen. So that they can then review them and get them out to all of us for further discussion, if we want to incorporate them or make those changes. And what I can say is, these are not your view, these are your views. They should not be discussed with anyone else, so please don't discuss them among yourselves. Or with anyone, obviously you have the right to ask the town administrator. To clarify issues if you need to, so that's always something. But we cannot discuss this amongst ourselves at this stage. The forms will be submitted, and make sure I get this correct, to Kate Federoff. For her incorporation into a final document. That will incorporate what we say on those forms in each of these, uh, seven areas. And that document will then at some point be codified and reviewed. And act as the final review with the town administrator. So, that's the basic process, you can, of course, if you have questions in filling it out. Or what you should or should not think about putting in the form, you always have the right to talk with, uh, Kate. If you feel you want to discuss any of it, is there anything I may have left out there, Mr. Gazinski?
Uh, I don't believe so, um, and again, like you had mentioned, uh, the board had determined the best way to handle that. Would be through, um, town council to, uh, collate all the, uh, documents. And then come with a final doc, some summary document for the board. Um, and certainly during the process, uh, the individual members of the board can certainly meet with me. To discuss any aspects, um, of the review as they're working on it.
Excellent. I'll ask the board members if they have any questions or comments, you seem to have the same disease I've had, Craig, that your mic is off, or was.
Oh, it's on now, I, I, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either.
Yeah, pretty straightforward, I just wish it was a fillable form, because you'll never be able to read my writing, I'll convert it to that at work.
I was able to somehow get it to work into a Word document, which is what I moved it to.
Yeah, I got a.
To rely on my penmanship, you'd get almost nothing that would be legible to anyone.
Yeah, that's my problem, so I'll, I'll fix it at work, or I can run it through something nice and, uh, type up some answers, Mike.
Great, okay, it's seven thirty-six, so I guess the next item. Is, Mr. Gazinski will discuss the approval of building waiver fees for the PFAS water treatment plant construction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, this is a standard request that goes before the board. Uh, at any project, municipal project, um, and we're, uh, requesting that the board. Essentially waive all the building fees associated with the PFAS water treatment plant construction. Um, the project will pay for any actual costs related to, um, those fees. Um, but it would be essentially this, just the town charging itself a fee, which really doesn't make a lot of sense. Um, so at this point, um, uh, again, it's a pretty standard request. And, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have, and I know, uh, Mr. McKay is, is on the line as well. If there's any questions about the project or aspects of this.
Go ahead.
Go right, go right ahead, Ms. Underhill.
I do have one question, um, how much exactly are the fees? I, I couldn't quite gather that from the documentation.
Uh, I don't have that specific answer, I don't know if Mr. McKay has any estimate of that.
It, it would be waiver fees for the, um, the plumbing inspection, and that could go from. I mean, we'd still pay the forty, the forty dollar inspection fee that they each, you know, that they actually do. It would be the, um, review of the, um, so if you figure a five point nine million dollar, uh, building. It's, there is a percentage of that that I could get from the, uh, building commissioner, it's just like, like we did on all other projects. Um, we would still pay for, um, the planning board, uh, peer review, because we do want that peer review. Even though it's, you know, a town engineering firm reviewing a town engineering firm, uh, we'd, we'd like a second set of eyes actually just looking at that also. Um, so they would, we would still have to pay the twenty-five hundred dollars for that.
Okay, I just wanted to get a better understanding of the gravity of.
I also want to comment, this is not new, we've done this for the stat- DPW staff building the school project and so on. So this is a pretty standard procedure of the town not charging itself.
Uh, Mr. Chair, with, with, with this, um, a little different, you know, we do have a project like this, the town's always done that. The oversight board for this will be the, the select board, um, so we will be coming back with, uh, you know, the town administrator. When we get the contract and all that settled, and, you know, ready to sign, but, uh, any change orders or anything of that nature. Would be the three, you know, three members of the select board would have to approve those, um, the difference between that. Is because of the licensing of, of what needs to go into these facilities, um, there are three members of the staff that will be, you know, assisting me. With what's gonna be approved to your recommendation, I mean, y- you're ultimately the, the water commissioners. And, you know, you'll be building this facility, um, it, it is a little different than if we had the, uh, permanent building committee. You are the permanent building committee on this project.
Great, in our copious free time, we'll be looking forward to doing that. And we'll be seeking your able assistance, Mr. K.
Yes.
So, um, are there any other comments?
None for me.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the building fees waiver for the PFAS water treatment plant construction.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the building fee, fees waiver for the PFAS water plant construction. I'll poll the board, Mr. Jermaine, yes, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Approved unanimously, I, I am in part serious, though, I don't pretend to have construction skills. Nor anywhere near the skills that the PBC has provided in the past, so we need to think about this. And I will tell you right now, as far as I'm concerned, I will rely on Mr. McKay and any other suggestions he might have. As to how we can get better understanding of how to make the appropriate approvals and review this process, so.
And Mr. Chair, I would definitely use the permanent building committee as a, more than, uh, you know, working with that group. Um, you know, I think you know how I feel, uh, it, it's a great experience working with them, um. And I'm quite sure that they'd be willing to assist us through this entire project.
Yeah, that was my thought, I'm not, I, I would feel much more comfortable having the PBC involved in this project officially or unofficially. But I don't know if there's a way to make it official, because it's water and sewer, it doesn't fall under town buildings, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's why.
Well, and we're paying for part of the new construction, though, out of water and sewer, also at the, the current DPW renovation, so. I, I'm just not clear on why this doesn't fall under the permanent building committee.
It, because of the way in which the licensing is taking place, and because of our authority in the process. We ultimately, in this case, turn out to be the authority that has to be responsible for managing the process. That doesn't mean we can't use others to assist us, and that's why I was. Sort of indirectly pointing at Mr. McKay to say that, yeah, we'd love to have the building, permanent building committee involved, so.
A- and not to keep pushing on, but I will just a little bit, the, the sewer, the water, and the stormwater are all paying for the renovations to the current DPW building. And yet the PBC is managing that project. Um, it seems that the funding source is at least two-thirds the same in this one, if not, you know, uh, is it? Is it because it is a treatment facility, I mean, what is the actual reason, because it's treatment, I, I.
That, 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 that's, that's exactly it, um, so the, the, uh, DEP actually still has to approve the final design of this. And what is actually being built, and there, there are licensing people, you know, that work for the, the, the water department. That actually have, they have to sign off on this also, um, members, you know, members of the DPW are not voting members. On the permanent building committee as much as, you know, we're there and, and are, we're, we're asked all that, but we, we, we don't vote. So it, it, it would be kind of tough to ask people that don't have the proper licensing, that, you know, that, you know, you, that work for you. To approve what, what's gonna be finalized for this project.
I, I, I'm still having a little difficulty seeing the difference between the school and the library, where there are clear regulations that we had to follow also. And none of us were expert on those, except we listened to what the licensing authorities told us for both of those to make it happen, but. Um, I, I'll, I'll go on record, I'd be much more comfortable if the permanent building committee was involved, and I'd be interested in finding out if there's a. Way to formalize that and make that so, but I understand, uh, you know, that, that doesn't step into the fees being waived. Or any of that other stuff, that's just my overall view of this project, I was a little surprised when, you know, just hearing that the PBC isn't involved in it. Because, um, I, I, I'd see us as the clients, just like the library and the school and the police and the fire are all the clients. When I served on the PBC that we worked with closely, a- and the DPW on the last project, obviously. Where we, we had to meet the requirements that they, they needed, like cell size, or classroom size, or all the things for the school. Or for the library, the number of book stacks and square footage, all those requirements, which none of us were expert on. But the experts from the departments came in and told us about, and, uh, just managing a, a construction project is quite an endeavor. And I don't know that it's something that honestly the three of us are up to doing at the level of quality that the PBC is typically doing.
Well, I think, Greg, the important thing is that what we're basically saying is, we have unfortunately, in this case. Full and ultimate responsibility, and we can't get rid of that, we can utilize the services of groups like the PBC. And DPW, Mr. McKay, and so on, to assist us to whatever extent we choose. But the ultimate responsibility still rests with us, whether we like it or not. And there is a distinction there, I did go over that at one point with them, uh, we are going to be, in fact, using the PBC. In this process, but it all has to ultimately come back for review through us also, so.
As does every change order on every other project we've ever done, I remember, we'd vote them and then have to go to the select board for approval. So I, I, I'll take your word for it, um, I just would like to see a codified reason. Um, or, or involvement of the PBC spelled out of what we're, we'd like them to do on our behalf. To assist us if we have to be the final authority, and I've always seen them as a person that is, a group that assists the select board. Because we couldn't approve change orders on the PBC beyond a certain nominal amount, we couldn't sign contracts beyond a nominal amount. The final authority has always rested on every project with the select board.
Understood, understood, uh, nobody's disputing any of that, it's just, there are apparently subtle legal reasons. And we're still gonna use them, we're still gonna involve people, but there are. Decisions we have to be involved in now that we normally could say, okay, you can do it, and we'll just say, okay. Okay, um, so, I think, let me just see where we're at.
Still too early.
Uh, water and sewer commitments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I will take a quick look here at those.
I want to know who the pessimist is who looked at this list and said, give it an hour for those first six items.
I will say.
We're gonna have to recalibrate under the new regime.
That would be me, however, you were, you had originally, there was a, uh, stormwater hearing scheduled for this evening at seven thirty. But that was taken off, so.
And it was too late to change the time for the hearing.
Advertised, so, yes.
That's fine, I, I, I get it.
We try, usually we're pretty good, but.
It's just one of those things, Craig, that, that caught up with us, and there's no way around it, so. Um, okay, I'll take. A discussion, a motion on the, um, water sewer department commitment.
Mr. Chairman, I request that the board vote to approve the water and sewer commitment for the month of October. In the total amount of three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the water and sewer commitment for three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the water sewer commitment for the month of October twenty twenty-one. In the amount of three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents, I'll poll the board, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, approved unanimously, and we have also.
And Mr. Chairman, um, request the board to approve the quarterly bill run commitment for the second quarter. In November of two thousand twenty-one, in the total amount of seven hundred and fifty-four thousand and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the water sewer department, um, commitment for the quarterly bill run. For the second quarter in November twenty twenty-one, in the amount of seven hundred fifty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the water sewer commitment for the second quarter in November twenty twenty-one. In the amount of seven hundred fifty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, I'll poll the board, Mr. Jermaine, yes, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
So approved unanimously, okay, it's now seven forty-nine. I think what we ought to do is go into the minutes, uh, draft minutes for October twenty-fifth. Do we have any comments? Corrections, changes?
I feel like I should drag this out somehow for, you know, another nine minutes.
No, I read them aloud in my. No, I, uh, I, I didn't see anything wrong with it.
All right, I guess, uh.
Oh, wait.
Yeah. No, go.
I would, I had just noticed that my name is spelled in a variety of ways throughout the document, I will leave it to Karen to decide. Which is the correct one and which is not, um, most, uh, the one that jumped out at me, because I usually read this on my phone, is.
With an E.
Not on the top of page three.
Three, are you Schultz without an E?
Uh, without an E, yeah.
Yes, made a motion to deny the request, I don't recall that, but I must have, um, so, uh, uh, no, I. Just, just spell check.
I remember that from when I used to do minutes for the permanent building committee way back in the day.
I think we need to have an extended discussion about the spelling of names.
All right, we can certainly do that.
My family made it through Ellis Island unscathed, is that, is that what we're after here, that they. In the name.
Well, you can tell from the. Well, you can tell from the spelling of my name that my family didn't make it through unscathed.
All right, well, that's about as long as.
No relation to Charles Stroes.
One minute, Craig, that was one minute. All right, I move that we accept the minutes of the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one select board meeting.
Pending the addition of the E.
Pending the.
Or any other Es that might need to be.
Craig's.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
I can do that.
Moved and seconded to accept the minutes of October twenty-fifth meeting. With the understanding that there will be a thorough scanning of all names, particularly those of Mr. Schultz for correct spelling. Before this gets published in the final form.
Thank you very much. And we've now stretched it for two minutes.
I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Mr. Schultz with an E. And Ms. Underhill.
Yes.
Okay, well, that was very good. We ate up enough time that we have about eight minutes remaining.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one item I'd like to ask the board to consider. Historically, the board has voted to. Close all non-emergency municipal operations at one PM on the day before Thanksgiving. And so I placed that proposal before the board for your consideration. This is, you know, outside any, any union requirements or anything like that, any contract requirements, but it's, it's something that the board has done in the past. And wanted to make sure the board was aware of that so it could consider whether or not to take that action.
I think that's reasonable, certainly precedent that's been set before, so I'll take motion.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to close the town hall the day before Thanksgiving.
Either the library and the DPW. And the council on aging.
Thank you.
All non emergency.
Yes.
Close it at one PM.
Yeah, not all day.
One PM of the day before.
We just added ours for staff, first time ever.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Schultz, Mr. Schultz. And Ms. Underhill, I'm sorry. The mind is gone, what can I say? I did want to, if I may, make a couple of comments. I've just got to see one here. First of all. I am not likely to be here in the state. On January thirteenth, when we have a Charles River Pollution Control District. Meeting coming up in Medway. I was wondering if either of the other board members might be able to attend. It's, I believe, at three PM in the afternoon.
What day and time again?
The Thursday.
It's a Thursday, January thirteenth. We, I can see if we can get somebody else to attend. It doesn't have to be one of the board members. And I will tell you right now, this, we have no voting rights there. It's just that it gives us an opportunity to speak if we want to on anything they're discussing and to understand. Where their monies are being spent, what their plans are and what's going on.
And you said it was three PM?
Yeah, I believe it's three PM, yes.
I may have, I have something that morning, but I might be able to make, I'm going to put it intentionally into my schedule. And I'll let you know as we set our board and finance committee meetings for work.
Yeah, let me know if you can. I could get, I just need to juggle a bit of childcare, but I could do it if I have to.
Where is it held?
At the plant facility, which is off of Village Street.
Yeah, I know where that is.
Okay.
I got conflict of interest. My father-in-law was the concrete engineer that built it.
No, I think you're okay.
I will caution, once in a while, they make a mistake and have the gate closed. So if you press the button to try to get in, it can take a few minutes for somebody to realize that you're trying to get in, so.
Got it.
But buy-in lines have been pretty good recently. You probably will find it interesting, in all honesty. They talk about any breaks in the plant and repairs, some of it's.
I would very much like to go, but I just want to, I'll make sure that I can get the time.
That's great. I will notify Elizabeth Tagliari. That you're coming and I will copy you on that notification. Actually, I'll copy both of you. So that if you, for some reason, can't make it, Erin can, at least we've got everybody covered. Okay?
I just have to check the board and finance committee meetings at work.
Okay.
The right time is up for them.
Let me just see. Mr. Kuzinski.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Have we discussed the letter from Senator Roush that we got?
I don't believe we have. We did, just to let the board know, we did receive a letter. From Senator Roush's office saying they were successful. And getting an earmark of a hundred thousand dollars towards the PFAS plant. I don't know if that's been signed by the governor. But it is in the bill currently at the State House.
Okay.
An update on that. So it's not final yet, but it's, it is certainly a possibility. Every dollar helps. Certainly, there's another. I believe twelve billion dollars coming to the Commonwealth through the recently passed infrastructure bill that was approved in Washington. We're certainly hoping to get some significant funds from that. Through a dialogue with our state legislative delegation. We're hopeful that the state will not forget the needs of the communities. As they're going through that process, so this. These funds are through the original five billion dollars the state received. As part of, as part of those federal grants.
Yeah, we, I will say we are going to write to our representatives. To try to get some more allocated, but as he, as the town administrator stated, every dollar helps, so. Okay, let me just see what else we have. I think we have that covered. Okay. Those are all the key issues that I had.
Did you want to just ask about attending, do you ask about attending a meeting for December sixth? Craig, are you around December sixth? You're muted.
I'm trying to be polite. I'll stop that. Not my nature. I have a board meeting that night for sure that I have.
Available on December sixth.
You are?
Yes, what is it?
No, well, you have a select board meeting scheduled for that evening. Then you have one scheduled for the twentieth of December. We can wait and do the licenses on the twentieth. You should probably all be there for the licenses that are just customary. So, but that's fine. That's still business time. They can't pick them up till right before the new year anyway.
Okay.
So, drawing that out.
So we'll keep with the sixth in the event something comes up. Otherwise, we'll have a very brief meeting. The object.
Very long meeting.
I just don't want to find that something comes up that's time sensitive and we have too long a gap there.
The only thing that I will tell you is that remember how you said, why was it an hour today? Because there was a stormwater hearing. I think that was rescheduled to the sixth and he may have already advertised it.
Yeah, so.
Very least.
We could, we could limit it to that if that's the desire of the board.
Well, let's see what we end up. We can move to the, what is it, twentieth or twenty-second? So. That's where we'll go. So no big problem here. We will try not to have anything of any consequence other than stormwater on the sixth.
Okay.
If you have to, I certainly understand. It's just a work commitment that I can't get out of.
Understood, absolutely understood. Okay, well, guess what?
It's eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. So. I'm going to, I have to find my papers here. Just give me a second.
Brenda's been waiting very patiently through most of this meeting.
Okay, I now have it. We have a hearing tonight. On an incident with respect to a dog in the town. And so what I'm going to do is I believe the first order of business is to open the hearing. So I'll open the hearing. Do we have to vote on that, Mr. Kuzinski?
I do not believe you need a vote to open the hearing.
No, I don't think so. I think we only have to vote to close the hearing. So I'm here by opening the hearing. On the dog. We do not take a vote in the hearing. We will listen to the issues and ask questions. And I'll ask the board in all cases first to give their comments and ask their questions. So, Mr. Kuzinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of dog hearings, we usually have the, our animal control officer. Discuss the situation. And then we will. The board would have any witnesses that would want to speak to the board about this. And then at the end, after the public hearing, the board would take a vote, so I would, I would. Recommend at this time that the board ask the animal patrol officer to. Give an overview of the, of the reason for the hearing. The events that have led us to this point. And, and then to take statements from other individuals from there.
So Ms. Hamlin, we'll ask you as the. Control of, animal control officer to please give us a briefing.
Okay, before we start, everybody that's going to give testimony needs to be sworn in, including me.
So. I'm going to ask for guidance on this because I do not know the procedure to swear.
So basically, you just have to ask me if the testimony I'm giving you is going to be the truth to the best of my knowledge, and I say, yes.
Okay, then I will so ask.
This is, this is unusual to do this in a Zoom meeting, but this is life living right now. So yes, Mr. Chairman, you could do this before every person speaks. Or you could ask who plans to speak and do it all at once. That's, that's up to you. And they could, they get certified by raising their hand on their Zoom and just saying yes.
Okay, then I think let's get everyone who is likely to speak, and I'd like to know the names as you. As you speak them out, so we know who it is who is likely to speak at this hearing. So would you please identify yourselves accordingly?
Cody Kane.
Dan Heslin.
Brian Fields.
Teresa Haslam. Heather Cuccinello.
Nicholas Praggiato.
Okay. Brenda Hamlin also.
Yes, Brenda Hamlin.
Is there anyone else to your knowledge who is likely to speak? Daniel Burns.
Jean Donnelly.
Julie Donnelly.
Julie Donnelly.
Yep, Pete, I thought I saw Beth in the corner speaking, but the one labeled Beth that was muted. I don't know if they plan to speak.
Beth McLeod. Your phone is muted, so if we can't hear you.
How about that?
Yeah, better.
So have we now heard everyone? And I'll ask you to raise your hands, your right hand, and swear that the testimony you're about to give. Is the truth to the best of your knowledge.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Yes.
And I will. I will now proceed with the hearing and will ask Ms. Hamlin to discuss on what's going on.
Okay, so my first contact with Heather Cuccinello, owner of Larry. Was this year, May tenth, twenty twenty-one. Had received a loose dog complaint from a neighbor, Kyra Hill, at twenty-six Heritage Path. The complaint was two dogs from fourteen Heritage Path had been loose quite a bit. And she witnessed Larry, who was a husky-type dog. And Heather's second dog, Quaker, a dachshund-type dog, rushed up into the street at an older gentleman. And that was on Sunday, the ninth. Kyra says the dogs are always loose. I called Heather and I explained our leash law that. You know, the dogs can be loose in her yard, but the first time the dogs. Come out onto the sidewalk or into the street, that it's in violation of our leash law. And Heather stated that Larry knows how to get out of his harness. And that's why he was getting loose. And I told her that she had to. Take different steps to ensure that her dogs don't get loose any long, you know, anymore. And harass anybody going down the road. I also gave her five days to license both of her dogs because at the time, neither one of her dogs were licensed. And she did accomplish that within the five days that I gave her. I was working on September twenty-fifth this year, twenty twenty-one. At approximately two o'clock in the afternoon, I think it was. Hang on just a second. Sorry, yes, about two o'clock, I received a dispatch from the military dispatcher. Sending me to fifteen Heritage Path for a dog bite to a five-year-old female. I responded to the house. Ms. Cuccinello was sitting on her front steps and I told her I would be with her. In a couple of minutes, I was going to go over to the neighbor's house to check on what was going on over there because the EMTs had. Come in and got a signed refusal from the parents and not to take Sarah to the hospital via ambulance. I spent quite a few minutes in the house at fifteen Heritage Path. I'd like you to look at the pictures that I sent in, if you could. With the permission of Sarah's parents, the Hesslins, I did take her picture. Several pictures of her bites. The first picture that you can see is her dress that she had on that day. There is a distinct hole in her dress from Larry biting her. The second picture is. Sarah's left-hand side, that is the three teeth mark that you can see, that's. Just to the side of her belly underneath her rib cage. The third picture, I understand, is extremely not clear, but I did. I did focus in a little bit on it. That bottom, on the bottom left-hand side is a tooth mark and that is on Sarah's. Right buttock cheek. That's why I, it's not as close as. Or clear as it might be because I told the parents I would fuzzy it up a little bit. The fourth picture, Sarah asked me to take pictures of what else hurt. So that is her right palm, that's a scrape. Where she got knocked over by Larry when he first came at her, knocked her over. The fifth picture is Sarah's right knee, where again, when she was pushed over. In being bitten, she did scrape her knee also. Excuse me. The sixth picture is of Larry. So you can see Larry is a fairly large dog. The harness that is on him in the picture, I believe, to be the one that he was being tied out on, which is not a very secure harness. At all. The pictures, I have four of them. I did not go in the house. I do not do that with a dog that has just bitten somebody. And Heather had a little bit of a problem to keep Larry still and sitting and listening. To her at that time. So I did, like I said, I did speak to the Hesslins for quite a while. We discussed her actual bite wounds and that she probably needed to go to. The, see a, the emergency care, whether they took her to urgent care, whatever, which they ended up doing. Taking her to an urgent care and she was placed on antibiotics for the bites. I spent quite a bit of time after leaving the Hesslins' house, speaking with Heather Cuccinello. About the dog's behavior, about the issues that we've had. She's had the dog for almost two years. I believe it's two years coming January. Um, she's had the dog for almost two years. I believe it's two years coming January. Um, he's very fearful. He has a lot of anxiety. Um, my belief is that she didn't take the steps that she needed to at the time to get him into a trainer and work through these issues. Um, she has since, um, spoken to a trainer from Bay Path Humane. Bay Path Humane is the rescue where she got the dog originally. I believe that's why Beth MacLeod is here, um, because she came and she evaluated Larry after he was taking off, taken off of quarantine. Um, give me just a second. Um, I've not had any other incidences with Larry, um, since this. Um, I'm not sure how many times Heather has actually met with Beth to follow through on training. Um, we have a unique situation in this neighborhood to where, once we get done with the hearing, um, you all have the choice of, once you decide whether he's dangerous or not, if you decide that he is dangerous, there's a list of things that you can order to have done with him. Um, such as muzzling him, placing a fence, you know, a solid barrier between him and, and the rest of the public. The problem is, is this neighborhood does not allow any fencing. So that is not something that you would be able to choose from um, as a, in order for him, if that's the way you go. So that's a little bit of a unique situation we have here. Um, he is already neutered. He is already microchipped coming from the shelter. So, I mean, your, your um, options are going to be very limited if that's the way you decide to go with him. Um, I will say that this is not the first dog of Ms. Cuccinello's that animal control has had contact with her. Um, she had several years ago, a rottweiler that, um, he was extremely aggressive. Um, to the point where he had gotten out a few times. He chased a few people. The UPS guy, um, got very scared one day. I believe the doggy that came through the door or came through a window or something. Um, so this is not her first dog that has, um, aggressive tendencies that I don't believe that she's addressed correctly.
Thank you. Is that the extent of your?
It is. Yeah, since, um, I would like the parents to, to speak, um, because they were there that day. Obviously, I came in after.
I think that it's appropriate to ask the parents to now speak.
Uh, yes, I, this is, this is Dan Heslin. I'm the, the father. Uh, thank you, Brenda. Thank you, um, select board, everybody attending this meeting. Um, we very much appreciate it. Um, I, I think maybe the best way to, to start this is maybe I just kind of recount the day, just to get everybody, um, on the same page, you know, from, from, you know, the, the actual event that happened on the twenty-fifth, if, if that's okay. Uh, so I'm just gonna, just gonna read, read this. This is basically what, similar to what we, what we emailed to the, um, to request the hearing. Um, so I'll just begin with, with just recounting the events of, of the September twenty-fifth incident. Um, so again, approximately two, two thirty PM, um, I turned down, um, in the car, in my car, the shared drive of Fourteen and Fifteen Heritage Path. Having arrived home with my two daughters, I parked at Fifteen Heritage Path and exited the vehicle along with my daughters. Heather Cuccinello, resident of Fourteen Heritage Path, arrived just behind myself, pointing to her parking spot at Fourteen Heritage Path. Sarah Heslin, my youngest daughter, age five, went into our family's garage, picked up a scooter, and proceeded in between our two parked cars in our driveway. At the same time, a door at Fourteen Heritage Path was opened and Larry escaped, running directly towards Sarah. Larry, a husky mix, advanced onto my property between our, my two cars and proceeded to attack Sarah. Sarah was left with two bite wounds, a torn dress and scraped hands and knees from her fall. Excuse me. Myself and Carolyn, my older daughter, age seven, witnessed the attack from inside our garage. As Heather called for Larry, I rushed to Sarah's aid and ushered the children inside to safety. Police EMS and animal control responded. At their recommendation, Sarah was brought to urgent care. It was prescribed an antibiotic course, as Brenda did, and get, and get indicate and treated for her punctured bite wounds. Um, our experiences with Larry demonstrate his history of being an aggressive animal. On numerous occasions over the past two years, Larry has aggressively barked and are charged at our family members and our visitors, including those utilizing the shared driveway to visit our home to drop off and pick up children. Larry's behavior is so concerning that we have requested the neighborhood children to utilize our back door when visiting to avoid any risky interactions on the shared driveway. Our children are aware that if Larry is outside, they should not utilize their own front yard or shared driveway again to avoid any risky interactions. To be clear, at no time ever have our children provoked, teased, or tormented Larry, nor approached him to pet or play in any way. There have been three notable occasions we have witnessed where Larry has had negative interactions with others. Once resulted in a conflict with residents across the street. Once resulted in us informing Ms. Cuccinello that Larry took off and was roaming the neighborhood unsupervised. And once resulted in a conflict with an older resident, as Brenda had indicated in her example. Due to these instances, we are not confident in Ms. Cuccinello's ability to appropriately contain Larry, ensuring the safety of our neighborhood and its residents of all ages. As parents, it is our duty to perform our due diligence to protect our children. Thus, our request for this dangerous dog hearing. Any dog who escapes their home and proceeds to harm an innocent bystander unprovoked should be considered a dangerous dog. Larry is a dangerous dog.
To add on to, uh, Dan's summary of the events on September twenty-fifth, um, I do just want to pass along a specific incident that happened just recently um, on the shared driveway between our two properties. Um, this happened on November second in the afternoon around five PM, where, um, a friend was bringing our children home from their Sunday school classes. Um, they pulled into the neighborhood or into the shared driveway. Larry was outside with, uh, Daniel Burns, I believe. And, um, as soon as the car turned down the driveway, began barking aggressively and in a hostile manner. Um, Dan was able to retrieve the dog and move along, but inside the car, Sarah was so scared that she requested the driver not open the car door. That she was terrified if the car door opened, um, Larry would get inside the car and attack her again. Um, and it was a, a prime example of the lasting trauma that this dog has provided our child as far as safety and security within her own driveway and the shared driveway that we utilize when carpooling or inviting friends over. Um, thankfully, it, I, I do wanna note, thankfully, it does not appear that this trauma has moved to other dogs. Sarah does appear comfortable with primarily smaller dogs um, and other dogs in the neighborhood. It is very isolated towards Larry. Um, she, she constantly asks, when is Larry going to be outside? Every single morning before we leave for school, she stops at the front door and asks, is Larry outside? Every single day when we come home from school, before we open the car doors, she asks, mommy, is Larry outside? Um, so she's, she's terrified in her own home, and that's unsettling for us as parents to have our child not feel that sense of security that they should because of um, an accident that happened. And we can understand that Larry getting out on September twenty-fifth was an accident. Unfortunately, accidents should not result in harm of a child, harm of any other adult or lasting trauma. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've heard the two testimonies so far. Um, I will, at this point, ask if Ms. Cuccinello has anything she wants to say.
Dan's recap of what happened that day is true. I, I can't dispute what happened. Larry did get out that day and immediately ran after Sarah. I he I, I, I can't say, he, he didn't run after her to attack her, but he's an anxious dog that was startled. He was freed, heard me yell at him and, and unfortunately went after Sarah because she, when she ran. I'm so sorry that this happened. I wish that I, I wish I had taken the precautions that I'm taking now to for this not to have happened. Larry did, the report of Larry getting loose out of his harness that day in May is true. Larry did slip his harness. I since have changed his harness. Um, it, it's not the same harness that he was in that day. It fits him better. Larry's never outside without supervision. Both of my dogs are never outside without being supervised. Larry does have a bark that can come off as aggressive, but it's, it's a dog's bark. I, I have taken, I've taken steps to prevent this from ever happening again. As far as them getting loose, I have gates up at my house. Now I have, Larry's never unleashed without somebody out there with him. He I do have him in my backyard, which is open to the driveway, so he does see people coming and going out of the driveway. And if it's not a familiar car, he does bark and it does come off aggressive. I since have been working with him with a training, um, with, with the trainer Beth, who has me introducing a muzzle training with him to, for his barking. I've introduced a, uh, I, I tried to introduce a bark collar to, to help with the barking because that does come off as being aggressive. I just, I as far as I, I'm working closely with his vet. His vet has not deemed him a dangerous dog. The vet has said that he is a high-energy, still in a puppy phase anxious dog, and he is on, now on medication for that, which has helped. Again, I'm, the training, the socialization, Larry had, has gone to puppy daycare. It's, things have slowed down since the pandemic. The hours changing, he hasn't been able to go as much. So reintroducing that also, um, is an option for me. Again, labeling Larry a dangerous dog, the thought of euthanizing him is not the solution to this. It's I failed Larry. I failed the neighbors. I, I didn't take all of the safety precautions that I could have taken. And I, I'm so sorry that this happened. Sarah, I understand mom, parents' frustration and, and concern, although yesterday Sarah was on my, with Carolyn, unsupervised with any parent, on my front lawn, playing with one of the neighbor's dogs in my front yard. There was that much of a safety concern. Or Sarah being consort and/or Carolyn, they would not have been on my front lawn where there's a dangerous dog. I again, I, Larry is an anxious dog, puppy, who does need a lot of training. I, I, moving forward, I, every day, it's, it's on my forefront to to train this, to train him and, and just take every single safety precaution measure and work with the trainer. I just I, I, I just ask that, that you believe and trust that. I don't take what happened lightly. It was an absolute accident, and I, again, I'm sorry. I wish I could have a do-over on that day.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to make?
Yes, can I, can I, can I jump in there, please?
Who is this?
Daniel Burns.
Okay, Daniel, you don't have a video?
Yeah, I thought it was on.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Hold on, it's not on?
No.
All right, um, anyway, I'm sorry. I just wanna start out by making sure it's clear that incident they mentioned on November second, whatever it was. I just want, make sure people don't think he was not tied up when that happened. Okay, he wasn't, he wasn't loose when that happened. Um, just wanna start out by saying that in the time I've known Larry, by no means do I consider him to be a dangerous dog. He's a playful, loving, and affectionate dog. Probably the most affectionate dog I've ever met. I have never seen Larry attack or even come close to biting another person or dog that we happen to encounter in our walks and adventures, and I'm not denying it happened that day. We all know that did happen that day. Just last Saturday, we took advantage of the nice weather. We went, took him to Castle Island. And there were hundreds of people walking around, most of them with dogs. There wasn't one. Um, we couldn't ask, have asked Larry to behave any better than he did that day. Numerous times over the summer, we took him to a place near my house called Dog Beach. And there he had many interactions with other dogs and humans without a single incident. Is he perfect? Nope. No, I don't know who is. There were times he can be anxious, but Heather has been working on it, and he is getting a lot better. She's working with the trainer and the vet has put him on doggy Prozac. Hope I didn't violate HIPAA there, which has made a noticeable difference in his anxiety. It took a little while for it to kick in, but we have noticed a difference. Um, Heather's also taken numerous steps to ensure the situation like this doesn't happen again. Besides the trainer and the meds, there are numerous gates around the house now to add an extra layer of protection. Let me close by saying that I've known him for six months. What I've come to know is a sometimes anxious, but getting better, loving, affectionate dog that in my humble opinion is far from dangerous. And that's all.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to make a statement?
Uh, Cody Kane, um, I'm over there constantly and, um, I've never really had a bad experience with him. He's always very playful with me. He, he adores me and he, he, uh, he's got a bark, but you know, he, he barks like any other dog. But he, uh, I've had nothing but good experience with him. He's, um, Heather has put up, uh, countless ga, uh, gates. And I've seen the, um, uh, the harness. I've seen that and, uh, I, I, I'm, like I said, I'm over there all the time and nothing but good experiences from this dog. I mean, he has he, yeah, he has his days like everyone else, you know, he's not perfect, like Daniel said, but he's, he's he's a good dog. And honestly, we, he, we need to give him another chance before we come to any drastic, uh, ideas between euthanizing, cause that, that's, that's just, that's just going out, out of, out of the way. That's kinda crazy. But, um, I think if we give him another chance, we, we will see a, a better result. That, that's all. Just nice sort, uh, short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who, who is Cody and, uh, Daniel? Do you live here?
No, I, um, I was there the day of the original incident. I'm, I date Heather.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I'm there.
Cody, who, who, who are you?
I date Brian.
Yes, and I live with Heather.
Yes, and I live with Heather.
Are there any other residents from Heritage Path?
I, I live, I currently live with Heather. Um, I, so Larry, let's, I just want to make. Something really clear. Larry is by no means a dangerous dog. He's a puppy. He's learning. He's growing. Everyone here. Has been bitten by a dog in life. I mean.
No, no, I have a 90 pound dog and he's 10 months old and he's never been.
Excuse me, let's just, let's just let the person speak who's.
So, thank you.
One person at a time, please.
Thank you. So I mean, he's a puppy. He, he did not attack Sarah. He wanted to play. He is not aggressive. He does bark. But he's not aggressive, just like all the other dogs in the neighborhood. The dogs are constantly barking, but Larry's sweet. He's, he's caring. He's, he's gentle. He's not aggressive and he is not a dangerous dog.
Excuse me, if I may ask, who is Brenda Cavnaros?
Um, she, this is actually, she's using my computer because her, we Zoom had an issue. I live in Heritage Path.
Okay, okay.
We both, yeah, we're both residents, but um. I couldn't get her Zoom to work, so she ran on over.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, if you're not speaking, can you please put yourself on mute? And then all questions should go to the Chair, Pete Germain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just, I would like to make one comment just to.
Who is this?
This is Brenda Cavarnas. Um, one comment that I'm just kind of confused, um, that it was said that the children were playing. Unsupervised. Our kids, this is a family neighborhood. Um, my kids are grown, but. These kids are always playing. They're, they're outside. They're in the street. They're, this is a family neighborhood. One thing I loved about it. Um, I also have a dog, 90, a very large dog and all the kids know my name. So. They, they run up to them, um, but they are on bikes. They are on the sidewalks. They are. Playing in groups. They are playing hide and seek. So to say that they are unsupervised, I think is, is unfair. It's kind of an unfair statement just. For, you know, it's for, for me to speak out and on behalf of this, um, I just don't feel that that was appropriate.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to comment at this time or just give testimony?
Chair, can I have an additional comment in regards to Sarah's wounds? This is the Haslam parent. Uh, one thing that we did not mention in our additional address, but that was. Um, discussed during the examination with urgent care was the explanation that dog bites. As opposed to scratches or playful playing wounds is that it contains both a puncture and a pressure wound. So there's the puncture wound where the tooth broke skin and a pressure wound where the bite pressed. Um, if necessary, I do have additional photos of my daughter taken that evening approximately four hours later. Um, after the bite where the bruising began and progressed over the next three days. So I find it challenging to believe that her wounds were due to a dog that wanted to play. As opposed to a dog that bit twice and created as described by the physician. At urgent care, a puncture and a pressure wound on my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who would like to give testimony at this time?
Yes, this is Beth McLeod.
Okay, it says Julie Donnelly.
No, it's Beth. No, it's okay.
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 Um, yeah, do you want my video on? I'm in the car, so.
That's okay.
Okay. Um, so I just want to address the, um, select board, uh, just from my perspective. Give you what I saw. Um, I have been working with reactive dogs for over 20 years. I work with a number of vets. I teach at Masterpiece in Franklin. I've known Brenda forever. Um, so I just, I just want to give you what I saw and the order of events in which. I was involved. Um, and just so you have that information. So, um. Originally Heather reached out to me on October 4th. She explained the event that had occurred and, and I think it's. It was pretty consistent with, um. Has, the Heslins, am I saying that right? The Heslins? Um, I think her telling me that. Event was pretty consistent with what they just read. So, um, I feel confident that she gave me whatever information she had. So based on that initial conversation, I made a number of suggestions which were. That we do a training session, that she begins muzzle training with him. Um, that gates be installed as airlocks at all egress points. So that any door in her house, we walk, and when I went over there, we walked through the whole house. Any door that she, that Larry might have access to. He'd have to go through a gate. So he would need some opposable thumbs in order to do that. So, so that we created some airlock so that even if. Somebody inadvertently opened the garage door that goes into the kitchen. There was, there's no way that Larry can just dart out, which is what I believe happened in the first incident. That he could only be walked on leash that, and I had talked to Brenda about this too, that. You know, he couldn't just be tied out outside, that he needed supervision all the time. Um. So that was my initial conversation with her. So I just wanted to, you know, always when these things happen. You know, we want to put as many safety controls into place immediately. Um, so then I saw Heather a couple of days later. And she had ordered all the gates. They were all stacked up, you know, ready to be installed. She had ordered a muzzle. Um, she had, you know, ordered a harness that I had suggested that I thought gave way more control. Um, for Larry. Um, we did some training. What I saw from a trainer perspective and somebody who specializes in behavior. Cases, um, that Larry is anxious. In the meanwhile, sorry, I had called. Uh, the vet, Heather's vet, who happens to be a vet that I work with, um. Talked to her, talked to her about, you know, um. Potentially after I had evaluated Larry, um, introducing, you know, a low dose Trazodone and fluoxetine. Regiment for him for anxiety. Um, one takes effect right away. The other builds up over six weeks, just like people Prozac. It takes a while to. Kick in, but if we could ratchet down his anxiety so that he could begin to learn. The things that he needed to learn. It's really tough to learn when you're anxious, right? We all know that. Um, so then I went, I looked at. Had those house. We looked at the backyard. I observed Larry. I did find him to be anxious. I did find. Um, you know, my recommendation to the vet was, you know, I think medication is appropriate here. Um, the one thing that I will say is that. Everything I had asked Heather, and I didn't know Heather before that, you know, I, I hadn't met her when she came to Bay Path. So I, I have no pre-existing relationship with her. I can only go on what I saw, which is. When I asked her to do something, she immediately did it. And has continued to work on the training, um, to help him change his emotional response to the things that are creating stress for him. Um, so does anybody have questions for me about the training process or anything that I can? Help fill in any blanks that you all might have.
I think at this stage, all we're looking for is testimony from individuals. We will get to a point where we can all.
I have one question.
Yes.
Um, uh, for Beth, since for, yep, since your first. Um, meeting with Larry a few days after October 4th, how many times have you been back to the house to actually train him one-on-one?
That's the only time, but I am in constant contact with Heather and, um. You know, and so she sent, we've done some video stuff and, but I haven't been physically back to the house.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who would like to give some testimony at this point?
I just wouldn't like to say, this is Julie Donnelly. Um, that Larry is the puppy. He's very easily excitable. Um, he does have some anxiety. Um, and I know that the situation that happened with the young girl is so unfortunate. But Larry's not dangerous. He, he was just overly excited. And nervous, but Heather has really. Taken all of this very seriously and she's, she's doing all the appropriate steps that have been asked of her, um, to try to. Hope that Larry doesn't play Houdini again. Um. And I, I don't think that Larry should be deemed a dangerous dog. He's not.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
Mr. Chair, Julie, I'm sorry. Can you just state your relationship with?
Sure. Yep. So Heather and I are coworkers, but we're also friends outside of work.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to give some testimony at this point?
I would. My name is Benjamin Briggs.
Okay, your relationship, Benjamin?
Um, I'm friends with Daniel Burns and I've gotten to know Heather and Larry. Um, I've met Larry on a bunch of occasions, probably, I probably met Larry five or six times. Um, anxious little puppy, good dog. Um, I've not seen anything aggressive. Um, he's, he. You know, I'm six, three. He hasn't jumped up. He hasn't ripped any of my clothes. He hasn't tried to bite me. Um. You know, just standard puppy, you know, he's, he's anxious. You know, I agree, uh. But I haven't seen anything that would. You know, throw a red flag. Um, I've grown up with dogs. Um, multiple dogs. I've seen bad dogs. And, uh, but I don't think Larry is terribly bad. He's, you know, he's just a puppy and. You know, from what I've heard through all this testimony, um, Heather's taken the appropriate actions. Um, everyone's trying to do the best they can and I think that, you know, I agree putting this dog down at this point is. Is cruelty and, uh, I mean, I granted, I know that the girl got bit. I didn't see any of the photos. Um, I've, I'm a hunter. Uh, I know some wildlife and. I've seen coyotes attack and I know what a dog attack looks like because I've. I've hunted deer and before I've even gotten to the downed deer, the coyotes have gotten to it and, uh. I know what dog attacks look like. So. He's a good dog. He's a little anxious. He's a puppy. He's growing. I think everybody's doing a great job of what they're doing right now. And I don't want to see this dog get put down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something really quick?
Of course.
Um, so nobody started this evening with the intention. Of euthanizing the dog. Okay. I think we need to put that out there. That is one of the options. That the state allows us to have, but tonight is, and, and I could be wrong, but I, I don't believe. In the, the board's decision that euthanasia is on, um, anybody's mind at this point. So I think. Everybody just needs to know that, you know, euthanasia is not on the table right this second. I mean, that's for you guys to deliberate and to decide and everything else, but. I don't want the people here thinking that, um, we came in with the intention of just euthanizing this dog. Um, I just, I just want to say that.
I will corroborate what you're saying. We are literally at this stage, just taking testimony. We aren't passing any judgment. And we certainly don't know all the options available to us. We'll get to that stage in a few minutes, I hope.
Exactly. And one, one thing I would like to say, um, also is I, I understand that. Um, everybody that knows Larry loves Larry, but. We also need to understand that Larry is almost a two-year-old dog. He is no longer a puppy. Um, and his actions are that of a dog, not of a little four-month-old, eight-week-old puppy. As I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who would like to?
Can I just, can I just say one other thing?
Certainly.
When, when a puppy, when you're raising a puppy, there are different stages with a puppy. You have sort of the infant stage. You have the puppy stage. You have the adolescent stage. Larry. Is still considered. Not a, not a full-grown dog. He's still in, in the stages of learning. And growing and when I refer to him as a puppy, it's. Sort of the mindset of where the vet has taken me and understanding his sort of mentality and his growth. So. Yes, he may not be. He's not under a year. He's a year and something, but he's still in an adolescent stage of growing and learning.
Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time?
Yes, my name is Jane Donnelly and I am a coworker and a friend of Heather Cuccinello. Um, I just want to say that. When I was five years old, I was attacked by a dog, resulting in over 500 stitches in my face. What, what happened on the said date with Larry, um, it's an unfortunate event. That was not an attack. When a dog is going to attack. You, you would know it. This dog is anxious. Um, and he just needs. The pro, the training that Heather has started doing with him. In time. And the, the difference will be remarkable. But he is not a dangerous dog. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, um, hi, sorry, I just want to, uh, speak really quickly. I'm friends with, uh, Daniel Burns. Uh, who lives in a beach community and over the summer I would stop in at his house on my way to the beach. Um, a lot of times when he and Heather weren't there. Um, every time I was on my way, I would tell him and Heather would reach out to me immediately like, listen. Um, my two dogs are going to be there. This is how they are. I want you to know exactly how they act. And she would run, you know. Through with me. Every time I showed up there, they were. Pretty calm, well behaved. They didn't even jump on me when I opened the door while no one else was home. Um, so they always, I, I never had a really, I never had a bad interaction with them. They're always sweet, but most importantly. Heather was always, always on top of, you know, making sure that. There was not a bad situation. After I would go there and I would see them later in the day, Heather would ask how, how Larry was. Um, and yeah, like I said, no, no. You know, no, no bad interactions. Um, I feel like maybe with certain communication. Um, or increased communication, there could be better, uh, you know, a better way to have a better relationship. With, with Larry, um, for everyone involved in this whole, whole ordeal. Um, but I just wanted to get out there and say. That, um, you know, Heather was always, you know. Overly concerned with how Larry behaved and I always felt that that was over the top. Um, but I just want to get out here and, and be able to say that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Can you just repeat your name, the gentleman that was just speaking? Is it just Zoe's iPad?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, Zoe is, uh, is Daniel's daughter. I'm Nicholas Pregiato.
How do you spell your last name, Nicholas?
Uh, it's P R E G I A T O. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to make comments or let's say give testimony at this point?
Is this a time for questions or still testimony?
Let's make sure we've got everyone who wants to give testimony have had their chance. Then, then we'll get into the rest of it. Okay, hearing nothing more. Um, Mr. Gazinski, I'm going to ask for your guidance. Is this the time to end the hearing and? Um, Mr. Gazinski, I'm going to ask for your guidance. Is this the time to end the hearing and to enter into a discussion period?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if there's no more evidence or testimony to be submitted, I would recommend that the board um, close the hearing, um, at that point. Um, uh, unless the board members have, um, specific follow-up questions for any of the witnesses or anyone that's given testimony, um, I would recommend you close the hearing. Um, and then you, the board can discuss the matter and, and to the extent that the board has questions or wants to allow, um, you know, clarification questions, board can do so.
That sounds like the stage that we're at at this point. So not having heard anything, before I close the hearing, I will ask the board members if they have any specific questions that they might want to ask at this point before we go into a true question period.
Chairman, I, I do have a couple.
Go ahead, Mr. Schultz.
Um, I, the, the trainer Beth, um, you, you have not worked with, um, the dog Larry, um, directly since this happened except for the house visit and you haven't done any training. Is it typical to do training with the dog to get an outside trainer to do this in a situation like this? Because honestly, we can say how nice the dog is and how he's not dangerous. He clearly bit somebody. He bit a child. That in my mind is at least an indication of some level of danger. Um, it's so, and I don't know in situations like that and Brenda, you can chime in too. Is it appropriate to bring trainers in and, and, and have you worked with this dog, any of that?
So, oh, go ahead. You go ahead, Brenda, go ahead and then I'll.
Okay, so, um, like Beth said, I, I've known her for quite a while and I respect her as a trainer. Um, but I also know other trainers with dogs that have bitten and they actually go in and work one-on-one with the dog and the owners. You have to bring the, you have to bring the problem out to train it out of the dog. Um, so you know, I, I don't know if time constraints are an issue, but, um, I would think I would feel better. Um, if Beth would have been at least back once or twice to actual have a, um, in-person update as opposed to, um, phone calls or texts or, or emails, um, with the dog. But yes, it's, it's normal to go and, and do one-on-one training with, with a, an aggressive dog, a fearful dog, an anxious dog.
Thank you, because I wasn't, I'm, I'm not familiar with that directly. I grew up with dogs back home with, they're all hunting dogs and trained differently. They're highly trained. Um, they weren't allowed to bark. So back in my grandfather's dogs back in Missouri. But, um, and the other, and, and you know, I understand everybody who's met the dog likes the dog. I understand that everybody who's met him thinks he's not dangerous. You're an adult, but again, as I said, he clearly bit a child and to me that does constitute some level of aggressiveness, dangerousness or whatever else we want to call it. This is not a dog that, um, that is, you know, appropriately behaved is the way I'm seeing it. So uh, that's what I'm curious about the training. Thank you.
Well, we'll get into more discussion on this in a moment. Is there anything else that?
Um, yes.
Anyone here has Aaron?
Um, when was the dog adopted? How long ago was the dog adopted?
The third week of, this is Heather. Um, it was the third week of January 2020. Um, I rescued him. We, like I said, he, I had started the training. He was going to, um, best friend's daycare, three to four days a week, interacting with other dogs. The pandemic hit, the hours changed. Um, it was, they were closed for a while. I, you know, everybody was, we were all homebound. Um, and you know, due to that, it just, my training, I should have been better. It wasn't just because of the time. There was, there was a lot of things that changed during that period. Um, and does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize, given where we're at, I'm going to suggest that I take a motion to close this hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to close the hearing. I will poll the board. Mr. Tremaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is now closed. Now we're open for discussion on the situation that we're dealing with, which is a dog that for whatever the reasons appears to have bitten someone, no questions, biting did take place. And the questions we have to ask are, how should we proceed from here? And if you don't mind, I'm going to turn to Ms. Hamlin again to ask her to give us some guidance as to what we might think about for alternative actions at this point.
So under the state law, um, you have the options and I'm probably going to miss a couple, but you have the option, um, if you find the dog dangerous, you can order the dog to be put into a kennel, a secure kennel, but we've already kind of hit that to where that's not an option in this neighborhood. You have the option to order the dog muzzled at all times when it is outside. You have the option to order the dog to be placed on a leash, no longer than three feet in length. You have the option to order the owner to, um, secure a hundred thousand dollars in liability insurance. You have the option to order the dog neutered if he's not, but he is. You have the option to order him microchipped if he's not, but he is. It's a permanent identification. Um, I think he's, I should say, I think he's microchipped since he came from Bay Path. Um, I would have to double check on that. Um, you have the option to euthanize the dog. I don't think I'm missing any of your options.
And we know we can't fence the dog here.
Correct. You, um, usually the, there is an option that you can, you can order a, a kennel to be put up with a permanent, like a concrete floor and a roof, um, so that it's escape-proof, it's dig-proof, it's, it's, um, unclimbable, but again, we can't do that in this situation.
Look, may I ask a question? When you say we can't put up fencing, but I know that certain stores sell these enclosures, if you will, that can be 10 feet or no.
No, absolutely. No kennels, no fencing, no decorative fencing, no, no, nothing. Um, and I, I don't agree for this situation to use, utilize an electric fence. I don't think that would be an option for Larry as a backup. Um, I know Heather has a tie-out run for him in the backyard and she had mentioned about utilizing a secondary electronic fence, but I, because you can hide that. Um, but I, I don't think that would stop him. Should he get loose? Some dogs it just doesn't work on.
Chairman.
Can I just?
Go ahead.
Oh, me? Yes.
I was going, I was going to ask a question, but go ahead.
Okay, um, Ms. Hamlin, is there any option, any other options such as the, the dog needs to live elsewhere where there aren't children close by or where there is the property to fence them in? Is that?
So, so years ago, before they changed the state statute and the state law, you used to be able to ban the dog from town, but what that usually did was give another town a problem.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So those options that I told, said to you, um, those are, those are the seven ones that the, that the state says you can do, but you could also, um, for training purposes, um, have her employ a trainer, whether it be Beth or somebody else, to actually come in and do a one-on-one face-to-face instead of just a remote training. You can add that to part of your requirements if you wanted to.
May I ask, if we were to take that action, how do you ultimately determine that the dog isn't a danger to someone like Sarah again?
Well, um, I'd be honest with you, since you asked the question, um, one of the reasons we're having this hearing is I understand that Ms. Cuccinello is put up the, the fencing, uh, put up the baby gates and is working on muzzle, you know, training the dog to put a muzzle on him while he's outside. She can tell you, I'm going to do this, I've done this, but with no orders behind it, if that dog gets loose and hurts another child, another person, um, we've kind of done a disservice to the town of Milis for not ordering, you have to follow this, you have to follow this, you have to follow that. Um, because there's, she can say, I promise I'll do this, but if we say, okay, we believe you and we don't do anything about it, um, it's kind of a disservice and whether it be a fence, a muzzle order, a leash, a leash order, um, it's, it's only as good as the people who are working with the dog. So if they decide to take the dog out one day without a muzzle on, that's on them. They've been ordered to put a muzzle on the dog, they didn't do it. If, if in fact, we were able to tell them to put up a kennel and they put the dog out in the kennel and didn't lock the door, I mean, the, the order is only as good as the person who's on the other end of doing what they're supposed to do.
Understood. Yes, my, my concern is looking at it and saying, assuming that there's a chance that the dog can be trained to overcome this and assuming that you put the liability back on the owner, that they agree for whatever we agree, might agree to as a board, is there a way we can put in force a series of steps or so on that would ultimately assure us that someone could test to see if that dog in fact does begin to meet the needs of a neighborhood with children running around. It's not a danger to those children.
I mean, she can go through all the training and everything. I'm not, I'm not quite sure you could ever guarantee that the dog's never going to bite again. Um, you can put the time in for the training and, and the, the training is always 85% owner, 15% dog, because the owner has to learn how to deal with the dog's anxiety. The owner has to de- deal with the dog's fearfulness, fearfulness and be able to read her dog and take the appropriate steps to stop whatever action may be going to happen. Okay, but you can never say that he'll never bite again. I mean, you can, you can go through temperament testing and that's what Beth did. She temperament tested him and I, I believe what she's saying is he's not aggressive, he's fearful and anxious, but dogs react to different people in a fearful and anxious environment. And for whatever reason, when he came out of the garage that day, he just, he didn't stop, he didn't stop. He just went and, and jumped on little girl and, and bitter. Um, it, it's, I don't think you'd ever be able to get a, a good trainer to tell you that the dog would never bite again.
Well, let me raise my concern a little differently.
Okay.
I'm, I've had dogs almost all of my life and I probably flunked more dog training than anybody else in history. Uh, but my concern is I don't know what realistic options we have at this point. So I'm going to ask you as the professional what your recommendations might be at this stage.
My recommendations?
I'm sorry, may I ask a question just before we get into her recommendations? I'm just curious before you start on the recommendations. Um, once we've declared it a dangerous dog and implemented whatever you are about to recommend, that stands in place until, well, that stands in place as long as a dog is in our community and as long as it's there and then if, forever. Uh, but then if that dog does bite another child, it's on the record and then more extreme measures can be taken. Is that the way I'm understanding this? And then please proceed with your recommendations.
Correct. So what happens is if a dog is deemed dangerous, it follows that dog his entire life, even if he doesn't live in Milis anymore. It follows that dog through the entire state of Massachusetts. Once you are deemed dangerous, you are dangerous in every town in Massachusetts. Okay, um, I don't believe there's ever been a case where a dog that was deemed dangerous was ever revisited and they took that distinction off the dog. Um, if that's what you're, what you're asking.
I wasn't asking that. I was, I was thinking the culpability. I mean, if you take step one, declare it dangerous and all these things are put in place and yet it still bites again, then you.
Okay, so then, then we go to the next step that the way that the state law reads is we then take custody of the dog, we have another hearing and we see how bad the second bite was. Um, and then you would do this again and, um, then you would review your options and then I would think after the second bite, um, the option of euthanasia would be more on the table than it is tonight.
Okay, so what I was asking was basically the steps which we now have, which is you're basically saying, one, the first step might be, we declare the dog dangerous. Is that correct?
So you would go by the, the state law and, um, I don't know, Mike, if you have that in front of you. Um, I.
I don't have it right in front of me now.
Okay.
I just want clarity on what the.
Yeah, so your, your, your next step is you're going to do a finding of fact. So you would pull out the facts of the case, what you believe the facts of the case are. And then you would deliberate if you believe the, the facts support finding Larry to be dangerous or not. Um, I believe the wording for the state law, and I'm, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me either. Um, I do know I gave it to Heather, I believe, is to determine if a dog is dangerous, it has to, um, have acted in a way that wasn't provoked. It wasn't protecting its property. It wasn't, um, protecting a litter of puppies that it has, um, and. Law here, if you'd like me to read it. I would love for you to read it, please, Teresa.
I'll just give it, I'll see if it can go in.
Little bit back up.
Just so that, I, I don't mind reading it just for recording what I'm reading off section 157.
Please.
Um, so any person may file a complaint in writing to the hearing authority that a dog owned or kept in the city or town is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. Provided that no dog shall be deemed dangerous, one, solely based upon growling, barking, two, based upon the breed of the dog, or three, if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances. One, the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic animal or a person from attack. The person who was attacked or threatened by the dog was committing a crime upon the person or property of the owner of the dog. Three, the person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring or otherwise provoking the dog. Or four, at the time of the attack, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure or structure in which kept the dog apart from the public and such person was not authorized by the owner to be within such an enclosure. Um, including but not limited to a gated fenced-in area, the gate was closed, locked, unlockeded. Provided however, that if a person is under the age of seven. Provided however, that if a person is under the age of seven, it shall be rebuttable presumption that such a person um, was not committing a crime provoking the dog or trespassing. Was that the part that you wanted?
Yes, that's, that's what I want. So basically, that's, you can't find the dog dangerous if it if it was for any of those reasons. Um, my concern is that the dog acted very disproportionately aggressive for the situation that was happening. I mean, he just came running out of the house. And he never stopped, he just went right after Sarah.
Can I ask another question, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, go ahead.
The nuisance versus dangerous, is that just interchangeable wording there? Or is that a different level?
Nope, different level, yeah. Um, different, totally different level.
Thank you.
Okay, so assuming for a moment that we're looking at dangerous because it exceeds the nuisance at this point. What options do we have that we can take, if any, to also assure the child that she doesn't feel threatened in the future by this animal?
So my suggest, my recommendations for this dog in particular would be to issue a muzzle order for when the dog is outside. When the dog is outside, for whatever reason, it has to be wearing a properly fitted basket type muzzle. Um, I would also recommend that you, um, use the, uh, leashing requirements of he's not allowed to be on a leash longer than three feet long. And, um, specifically in the, in the, um, state law, there's a specific size leash that you have to, has to be a certain, um, size to hold a certain weight. We would have to look that up.
A minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet in length.
Thank you, Teresa. Um, and I would recommend.
Does that mean on the property too?
Yes, if he is outside, he has to be muzzled and he has to be leashed with that type of a leash.
It says, when removed from the premises of the owner or the premise of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and hu- humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. So when removed from the premises.
Okay. How about, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
How about further consideration of training, onsite training?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Things like that.
Yep, you can, you can, um, make that part of your order, if that's the way you want to go. And it would be, I would specifically say in person, um, at the, at the home. Because that's where the issue is. It doesn't appear that the dog is having issues when they're taking it elsewhere. Um, he may just be very anxious and protective of his house. So I would suggest that the training be specified at the, at the residence of Ms. Clutinello.
Okay. Then, I'm gonna ask yet another question, and this would be to the Heslins. If, and this is just an if, we were to consider implementing an order that number one, the dog is dangerous. Number two, the dog has to be muzzled, must be on a leash and we know three hundred pound tensile strength is minimum and we'll find out, you'd find out what specifically has to be done, if more, for that dog. And that there has to be onsite training for the dog. I recognize all the trauma the child has been put through, do not get me wrong on this. But would that at least be acceptable unless there's another incident? Now, obviously, another incident changes everything. But is that something that you'd find accessible? Never mind, acceptable.
I think, I think the purpose of this hearing, we, we kind of were under the, uh, expectation of the, of, of, of something along those lines. Um, the issue here is it took, it took this bite, it took this attack, and it was an attack, I'm sorry, I, I witnessed it, it was an attack. Um, it took this for her to be held accountable to train this dog, and she clearly has a history of not training her dogs properly. This is an odd, this is not, this is not a first offense. So I don't think I will ever feel one hundred percent confident. I think that labeling Larry as a dangerous dog is the right thing to do. And I think she needs to be held accountable. She needs to be checked in on, make sure the dog's being trained, make sure whatever's going on in the house, there have gates, whatever, the dog's muzzled. I think the accountability would, would make us feel better, yes. And I don't know if Teresa wants to add anything.
Yep, yeah, I mean, our, um, priority is that Larry is labeled as our strangers to him experiences have been with him. Um, we feel comfortable with the measures that you just proposed as far as the muzzle and the leash. Um, as that is the next step in a process. We, for the record, are fearful that this will be a process. And that even with additional measures in place, um, it's important for us that that label is there so that hopefully never, but if we do end up back in this situation, those baselines have been put in place. Does that answer your question?
It does. I'm now gonna ask my colleagues if they have any further comments and questions.
I do. So I mean, it's background, having owned dogs, currently on a dog, and also a five-year-old. And the layout of this neighborhood in such close proximity. I, I, I'm really feeling sympathetic towards, um, the family and the five-year-old, of course, because that the, the child shouldn't be fearful to go in their driveway or to go out their door. And the risk here is that, what, what I struggle with is I don't wanna wait for the dog to bite a kid again. Like, I, I don't want that to be our benchmark, that, oh, well, you know, we put these and stuffs, these things in place and, oh, bit again, now what, you know, I, what if it's worse, what if, you know, I, that's just, that's my biggest concern. You know, I, I think it's very gracious of, of the family to be willing to work with others on this. Um, I would, I would personally, I, if we were going to issue, um, orders, I would agree with the, the mush, muzzle, the leash. I would even go as far as to say the owner has to secure the hundred thousand liability and the training has to be in place. And if, if, I'd like to know more about what controls, I guess, or monitoring is in place to ensure that the training's happening. Because while the muzzle is great and the leash is great, because that does keep the dog, you know, reasonably away from people, you know. I had a dog that baby gates were no match for. So, um, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rely on that either. And if the dog has a tendency to run out and then like jump on a child and bite them, um, that's a huge concern for me.
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, I agree, um, wholeheartedly with the, the muzzling, the three-foot lead and the training. Um, I don't know anything about the insurance availability. I think it makes a lot of sense, but, um, having worked in an area to acquire insurance, I don't know the availability of that. I hate to set it up as a failure. Brenda, if you can inform me, are there places to issue those policies? I'm not terribly concerned about the cost, I'm concerned about the availability.
Um, that they're, they are available, they're, they're costly. But I mean, you, you have a liability living in your house with you. Um, so that there are insurance companies that offer that policy. I, I truly don't think that the state would have made that a state law if it was something that couldn't be attain, obtainable.
But, um, yeah, I, I think the muzzle lead and the training, um, are clearly things I'm leaning towards. Um, in favor of, not leaning towards, I'm very much in favor of those things. Um, as far as follow-ups, um, is it a case where the dog is off the leash or unmuzzled? And then it's reported, or are the follow-ups that you're doing, is there a training log that's reviewed by anybody? Is there any of that work that's done on a, you know, proactive basis?
Well, if she, um, it depends on who she chooses to, to train with. If it's Beth, um, I don't think that Beth would have a problem giving me, um, the information. Could be wrong, um, about when she was actually on site and there. Um, Heather has been very forthcoming, she shared her email, um, with Beth and Bay Path Humane. Um, when she reached out to them and let them know what was happening. Um, so unless something changes, um, we could ask that they give us a, a monthly, um, whether it's an email to me, a call to me. And, uh, let us know when they've been there. And, um, as for the, the leash and the muzzle, yes, if somebody sees the dog outside, um, without a muzzle and a leash, that it would have to be reported to me, um, and then I would follow up on that.
Okay.
I just wanna add that, uh, I'm happy to share, I would be happy to share like both the training plans and the ongoing progress with Brenda or whoever, whoever you deemed wanted to get that info.
Yeah, and, and I would take it as an indication, um, you know, if the dog is found off lead or off without a muzzle or is not following through in the training, I would take that just as seriously as I would if it had been another child. I mean, I would, I would see if there's not work being done that complies with what we've ordered. Um, I don't care if there was a bite or not, um, if, if this happens, they should be back here in front of us.
A- absolutely, um, Craig, um, that's, that's part of the orders that if they're in, in violation of any of it, they can be cited, the dog can be picked up, I mean, it once the orders are put in, if that's the way that you're going, then seriously, no pun intended, there's a little bit more bite behind what we can do as opposed to just a regular leash law.
Okay. Before I try to summarize, are there any other comments or questions? Then.
I, I, I just have one more clarification as far as the leash.
Who is this, please?
Yeah, Daniel Burns, I'm sorry. Um, just clarify, cause I asked before, that, I understand the three-foot leash, but is that in the yard too or only off premises?
I believe the way they read the law was off premises.
Okay, okay.
I will, I'm not positive.
Because I think in the yard, because it's not a fenced yard.
I, I listened to what was just read, I would appreciate Dan or Teresa to read that section again, please.
Of course. When removed from the premises of the owner or of the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained. When removed from the premises.
Yeah, that's what I thought you had read the first time. So, that's, clarify it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would just add that, that, that the, uh, comment time is over, that you're, it's only the board's discussion at this point.
Oh, yeah.
Before I.
I would, I would like to get clarification from Brenda, um, on off premises. So if the dog was unmuzzled and unleashed in the backyard and then crossed into the driveway, that clearly counts as off premises.
Yes.
So there's two different things. So the dog has to be muzzled at all times when it's outside. That doesn't say, yep, that doesn't say off premises. So the muzzle is all the time when the dog is outside. The short leash is when it's being taken off premises. So if she's been working with the dog to be muzzled and she's using one of the basket muzzles that allow, it goes over the dog's muzzle and its head, that's gonna be securely in place. So the whole point is, is to make sure that they can control that dog when it's on their property also. Because as soon as it puts a toenail on the sidewalk or the other side of the driveway, that's in violation. So they can choose whether they wanna keep that dog tethered in their backyard. But if the dog comes off the property, then they're gonna have a problem. But the dog is going to have to be muzzled at all times when it's outside.
Can I just follow up with a question on that then? Um, so wouldn't that, I mean, obviously, the muzzle is going to be preventing a bite, but wouldn't would there be anything that should be put in place if the dog's an escape artist? So that, you know, if they do tie it to a line, which doesn't really sound like a good idea in this case. You know, is there something that we should be putting in place or saying about that, that it needs to be under supervision when outside, period?
That is totally your, um, u- up to you, that you can, you can do that, yes.
Okay.
And, and Erin, just to, um, address something that you said. You know, obviously, we don't ever want another person, especially a child, to be bitten by any dog, let alone this dog. Unfortunately, um, one of the reasons we're having this hearing is to make the homeowner, uh, the dog owner, sorry. Hopefully see that we're serious and that she has to do everything in her power to make sure that this never happens again, so that we don't have to revisit this. Unfortunately, we're trying to be as proactive right now as we can because we're usually having to be reactive. Um, we can't, we can't say, oh my goodness, it's this kind of a dog, it's gonna have a problem, so we need to have a hearing. We can't do that, it's not fair. Um, so we're trying right now to do everything we can so that we don't ever have to revisit this and hopefully that everybody that has a hand in being with this dog takes it as seriously as they need to.
I think that summarizes what all of us feel at this point, there's no question.
Question on.
Ever see this dog coming back to us for any reason again. Go ahead, Mr. Schultz.
Uh, Brenda, you said the dangerous, um, you know, the, 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 the finding follows the dog around the state. So it's, you know, it's not, doesn't apply to Milis, do these same restrictions apply around the state? So if this dog is elsewhere and something.
Yep, so if, if they take this, this dog to, to Castle Island or to Dog Beach or anywhere else and, um, the, the dog has to be muzzled and it has to be on a short leash. It, it's an order and it's good throughout the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? And I think Karen, you were just advising us that the question and answer is pretty much over at this point. So we're coming up to how we wanna proceed. Based on what I'm hearing, here, what I have heard for steps that we might consider, and I don't wanna put words in the mouths of either of you, my colleagues, but let me just summarize what I think I've heard thus far. It is possible we could put in place in order that number one, the dog is deemed a dangerous animal. It does follow the dog, at least in Massachusetts, for the rest of its life. But that immediately quantifies the severity of the issue. Number two, that we have a muzzle order associated with this animal. Number three, it must be on a leash as a po, uh, with respect to the leashing law that's in place. Whether it's three hundred pounds minimum or whatever it is based on the size of the dog, that's to be determined, but it must be on a leash and it's a three-foot leash. Number four, there will be onsite training with a minimum of monthly reports as to how the training is progressing, what the situation is with the animal, what actions are being taken and so forth. I think that's a summary of what is going on.
I have two others.
But let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
Number five, that there will be a one hundred thousand dollar liability bond in place on this dog. On this dog, should it ever get out. And the dog, under all conditions, must be supervised when outside. Does that summarize the points that have been brought up thus far?
Yes.
Now, we understand, and I'm gonna tell you something, I was bitten by a dog when I was young also, but it was an accident. And I know that, but you couldn't have convinced me when I was seven years old. It happens. But I think based on what we've heard, these represent. What I'll call reasonable steps. With the understanding that we never, ever want to see this dog back here again. And I'm gonna tell you right now, had I not heard the parents. Say that they were willing to accept something short of euthanasia for the dog. I wouldn't even be proposing this, because that's a big step when you had one of your children bitten for whatever reason. So, given that, are these points acceptable to this board?
Yes.
And given that, I will ask Dan and Teresa Heslin. Are these points, points that you could live with?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I'm gonna, one final time, ask my board members, if these are acceptable, I will take a motion. Specific to these points.
Okay, um, I move. Wow, everything you just said, so I move that. We will be placing various orders in place, that the dog will be deemed dangerous. That.
All right, Brenda? I know you've been through a lot of these, do they? Dog dangerous first, and then we go into everything else?
Correct, so.
Okay.
The first thing you have to do is do a finding of fact, so you're going to list what you believe the facts are.
Okay.
As in, um. One finding of fact is that the dog was loose on May tenth, twenty twenty-one. The second finding of fact is that the dog did bite somebody. So you list.
Okay.
Making, letting, so then you vote on whether you want to deem the dog dangerous or not. And then the third step is go, to go through what your orders are gonna be.
Okay, so would the finding of fact be like a motion or just something that we say?
Nope, so you would say um the listing of finding of facts for this hearing and the dog Larry Cuccinello. Um, is as follows, and just list them.
Um, Mister Jermaine, do you want me to start with some of those? How do you wanna put this together?
What I would suggest is we have a timeline that was given to us.
Yep.
We go with those, that finding of facts. That the dog did get loose on April, on May tenth, but the facts are. The dog did get loose again on September twenty-fifth, and at that time did bite Sarah. Hen- uh, Henlon, I think, Heslon, I'm sorry. And that we have pictures and everything and doctor's statements associated with that. And the, the other, and the other actions have been taken to try to work with the dog. But those are the facts of what has occurred.
And may I add one, please?
Yes.
Um, I would also say that the do- when the dog did it attack on September twenty-fifth. The dog was not provoked, was not protecting its property or its offspring.
That's fine, because those are the considerations that go into nuisance versus dangerous. Okay, having said that, I will then take a motion. Is that your motion?
Oh.
Okay, I, I move that we declare uh Larry dangerous.
So, I, I'm based on the fact, or do we discuss through all those other points?
Based on the findings of facts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded, that based on the findings of facts, the dog Larry. Is considered to be considered a dangerous dog. I will now poll the board. Mister Jermaine, yes. Mister Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay, the dog now having been deemed dangerous. We now can go into the orders that we are going to recommend for this dog.
Okay, in, in the form of emotion?
It must be in the form of emotion.
Okay. All right, I move that based on the findings of facts and um declaring the dog dangerous. That the following orders be put in place, that the dog um has a muzzle order. Um, anytime out of the house, it must be muzzled. That the leash um off the property can be no more than three feet in length and must be appropriate strength. That um a training um regimen be put in place. And that monthly reports be provided about the progress of training.
On site.
On site, at the home of the dog. And that um the dog owner carry a hundred thousand dollars liability insurance on the dog. And that at all times when the dog is outside of the house, it is supervised.
Okay, this is moved and seconded. That we recommend the following order be put in place, that the dog Larry. Being deemed dangerous must be muzzled at all times when outside. That there'd be a leashing order in place. And the leash will meet whatever minimum requirements for the size of dog is necessary. That. The, there'd be a training regimen put in place for on-premises training and that a report at least monthly. Becoming, be forthcoming to, and I'll say in this case, our uh animal control officer. I think is most appropriate place to have that report. Is that fair, Brenda?
It is, um, it will s- switch from me to my predecessor in January.
I understand, I understand, but you have a fifty-year commitment here, so it's not a big deal.
I have one question that was raised by um, by, by Beth. Um, a little more definition on how long this training needs to run, um, because it's not an infinite training. I, and I have no concept of how long it should be. Is it something, Brenda, that would be until the trainer feels? And I'll leave it at that, I have no idea how to say when it's trained.
How do, how do you determine when there's adequate training? Or if the trainer determines that the dog can't be trained, one or the other.
Um. Personally, I, I would say a minimum of six months. And maybe um we can speak to the, speak with the trainer and see how she feels it's going.
To be reviewed after six months.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay. And I think those are the five major points we needed to cover, correct?
Uh, the two more, the liability insurance and the supervising.
Supervision, I, I thought I'd already mentioned them, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Fine. So we've had a motion, correct? So I will now poll the board. And I'm gonna start with Mister Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mister Schultz?
Yes.
I, before I conclude this, I have to ask one more time. Are the Heslins amenable to this?
Yes.
We are, yes.
Okay. So, and Ms. Hamlin?
Yes.
Does this sound reasonable to you?
Sounds reasonable to me. Um, just to let Ms. Cuccinello know, she will be receiving these orders. Written, so there's no question as to what exactly the board voted on tonight. She then has the opportunity, if she disagrees with any of what was, anything that was done tonight. To uh go to court and have the court um review what we've done tonight. So she can either accept them or take them to court and have it reviewed. It's not a done, done. Okay, okay. I just wanted to let her know, but she will be receiving the orders in, in writing. And I'll work with Karen on that to get them to her.
I'm hopeful that this is something that everyone can live with. But at any rate, that's the decision of this board, and we will move forward accordingly. I will now.
Thank you very much for your time with this.
You're welcome. I think it's important to have a resolution in place on this. Okay, is there anything else that anyone has? Left on our agenda, I think this was the last item on the agenda. I'm gonna ask Ms. Beray and Mister Kuzinski if there's anything that we've left off.
That was it, you do have an executive session, but this is the last item on your regular uh agenda.
That's fine, then what I'm going to do at this stage is this board is now going to adjourn to executive session. At which time we will go over um some contract issues. And then we will adjourn out of exa- close the executive session. And then it uh close the meeting at that time. So, thank you all very much.
Overboard.
About to do that.
To read why you're going into executive session and then pull the board.
Okay, let me be much more specific, hang on.
Thank you.
We are gonna conduct strategy sessions in preparation for union and non-union personnel. Specific to the police chief, the Massachusetts Coalition of Local Police Local one seventy-one. And the Millis Police Association dispatchers. So at this point, I'm going to poll the board to adjourn to executive session. Um, Mister Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mister Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much. We'll see you in a few minutes.
Thank you.